Good evening and welcome to the August 13th, 2020, 6:00 PM, special meeting for the purpose of discussing any and all business via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 40A of Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dated March 12th. In accordance with Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manners. One, it is being transcribed by the court, the council stenographer. The meeting is being televised via the PBDX television, and it is being presented by, through the Zoom platform. If we can now please rise and have a moment of silence on the Fledge of Allegiance. And now for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting. First item on the agenda actually is going to be the warrant. I would entertain a motion to receive and approve under suspension of the rules, Item B, state, B state primary warrant for September 1st, 2020.
Don't move, Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Is absent.
Counselor Safler.
Yes.
Ms. Sullis.
Yes.
Dool.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Danny Martin.
Yes.
Circo.
Also absent.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Wiggins.
Yes.
Rozagnal.
Yes.
Motion carries, nine to zero, two absent. The counselors, could you please sign the copy of the warrant that I sent to you dated today's date and return it in the envelopes that I provided? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is basically getting back into the Wiggins Auditorium. Before I open it up to the council, I just wanted to say a couple of words on what has transpired to get us to this point. First and foremost, despite what any counselors have either said or seen in the newspaper or heard, no decision has been made regarding September 27th, and that's why we're meeting tonight. That's first and foremost. I wanted to have a meeting with the council, with Sharon Cameron present, with the mayor present, to discuss what our options are regarding reopening, what it would look like with reopening us back in the Wiggins, and hash out any concerns that we as a council have regarding getting back into the Wiggins Auditorium. So I just wanted to make that statement first and foremost, that no determination has been made. My hope, my goal is that following this meeting, there will be a process in place for September 27th. My hope is that we end up back in the Wiggins, but I wanted to hash that out with us as a group so that we make the best determination, that each individual feels confident and comfortable in their own realm. We're in uncharted waters here. This, not one of us have ever gone through a global pandemic to this magnitude that affects individuals' lives, yes, the economy, yes, it affects every aspect of our being. So me personally, I'm trying to navigate this the best I possibly can with the information that we have at hand, and I know we're all trying to do that. I just wanted to make that brief statement ahead of time, just so that everybody knows where I'm coming from. At this point right now, I'll actually open it up and I'll ask the mayor to say a few words before I open it up to the council. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Great to be with you, and I hope all of your family are doing well. Sharon Cameron, our Health Director, and I are here to, in response to a motion that was made on July 17th, 2020, and it's P346-20. I wanted to read the motion. Move to respectfully request that our August City Council meeting be held in person in the Wigan Auditorium, and also request that His Honor, the Mayor, and Sharon Cameron, Director of Health, provide guidance and guidelines on how we can convene an open session in the safest possible way, with suggested reasonable accommodations for those who cannot participate in person. That was a unanimous motion. Sharon Cameron and I are here today to discuss the will of the council. I respect your authority, respect your decision-making as to how you want to do your meetings. Certainly, I have my opinions. My opinion is that we should not meet in August as a group in the Wigan Auditorium, and if you do decide to meet, absolutely you should not have the petitioner in, and you should not have the public in. In fact, I think if you just had the petitioner and didn't have the public, that would potentially be a violation of the Open Meeting Law. So those decisions will have to be made by the City Council, and that's your authority, that's your decision-making ability on that, on how you want to structure your meetings. I am here, Sharon Cameron is here, to support that. Should you decide to have those meetings, we want to help you with the logistics and to make that possible and to do that in the safest way that we can. So we're here to support the decision that made by the City Council as to how you want to conduct your meetings and go from there. I certainly have other comments and certainly can talk about the Wigan Auditorium, but I can do that at a later time. But I'm, Sharon Cameron and I are here in response to the motion that was made, and we're ready to discuss it as best we can. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I open it up to the council, I did want to say one other thing. I have met with Sharon Cameron and the mayor regarding options regarding opening. Mr. Palmer was there, as well as Frank from IT. So we have options if we want to move back into the Wiggins, whether we want to move in a hybrid fashion, whether we want to move fully in as a council, or whether we want to remain Zoom. So all three of those options kind of are on the table, according to conversations with Jim Palmer, the hybrid, what the hybrid would look like, just for your edification. We would be socially distanced in the Wiggins. We would use, utilize the screen for any members that did not feel comfortable and confident in being in the Wiggins. They would be zoomed in, as well as the petitioner, and as well as any public that wanted to speak on any topic, according to our rules and regulations. So just to give you a little background of at least what's been discussed up till now. I'll now open it up to the council for questions or comments or concerns. Counselor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So it sounds like based, I have a couple of thoughts, but the first being, you know, any, any decision or procedure that comes out of the meeting tonight, I think really should be vetted by the City Solicitor's Office. This has been, this issue's been litigious. There's been some legal action regarding it, and I would feel more comfortable, based on whatever we do tonight, that at least it gets the review of the City Solicitor to ensure that we're following all of the latest updates with regards to the Governor's Orders and the meeting, Open Meeting Law. Second to that, based on, so you might understand that the, essentially the, the working plan is that we would do some sort of hybrid where it would be counselors and support staff, like where you currently are, but in the Wiggins, based on choice if they want to be in there to have the hearing, and it would be that only, but yet, and then the public and any of the petitioners would be zoomed in.
Correct.
So it's essentially doing very similar to what we're doing now, but with counselors being able to be in the building, but the, and then the public participation and the petitioners would be zoning.
Correct.
All right, so that's the baseline that we're operating off of the plan. Okay. All right, that's it for me for right now. Thank you.
And that's, and the reason why that option is on the table is through discussions that I've had with Sharon Cameron, our Health Director. She thought that that was the best option right now, not having the public there for a number of different reasons. And Sharon, if you want to weigh in on, on the discussions we've had and the recommendations that, that you have put forth when we've had those discussions, that would be great.
Sharon, thank you for the invitation to speak with you tonight. As you know, recent data shows that trends of COVID-19 activity in Peabody have increased in recent weeks, and we've been designated a moderate-risk community by the State Health Department. That's based on our date, our rate of daily new cases, as well as the percentage of tests that are returning positive. In addition, our local data shows that between April and July, the median age of our cases here in Peabody has decreased from 63 years to 42 years old. And statewide, similarly, they're seeing the average age of recent COVID-19 cases is 39. It's believed that similar trends across the state are largely being driven by the impact of gatherings, as well as relaxed practices around social distancing and mask use. So I'm here in my capacity as Director of Health to provide you with public health guidance around best practices to reduce the potential for disease transmission in a group setting. I understand that all of you as city counselors have other interests that are beyond the scope of public health that you need to balance when you make a decision like this. I pledge my collaboration with you to ensure that whatever decision you make about how to proceed is implemented as safely as possible to protect the health of the council members, as well as of our community. First, I think it's really important to note that municipal legislative bodies are exempt from the Governor's Order restricting gatherings throughout the Commonwealth. With that said, we understand that the Governor's Order does represent best practices to minimize the potential for disease transmission when people gather in enclosed spaces. These best practices include a recognition that virtual-only activities are the safest at this point in time. Risks associated with indoor in-person events can be reduced if events are kept small, if participants remain six feet of distance from each other and they wear face coverings. Another best practice is for indoor gatherings to limit them to no more than 25 people in any single enclosed space, and that's regardless of the size of the space. So in alignment with these best practices, if it's the wish of the council to proceed with in-person meetings, my recommendations would be for you to reconvene the in-person meetings with only council members and other staff that are necessary to run the meetings, for instance, the city clerk, the IT department, people who need to facilitate the remote participation piece of the meeting, and that you limit, all public participation should continue to occur remotely for the time being. I also recommend that the Wigan Auditorium should be clean before and after council meetings. The entry to the building should be restricted to one entrance. All passageways to and from that entrance, including the elevator, restrooms, other high-touch surfaces, should be cleaned before and after your meetings. Other City Hall employees should be instructed to work remotely if their work hours coincide with the City Council meeting. Microphones should be designated for use by specific counselors and cleaned and disinfected before and after use. Counselors and any staff attending in person should conduct a self-screening for symptoms before attending an in-person meeting, using a checklist that we've developed for city employees, and a contact tracing log of any in-person participant should be kept in the event that the Board of Health needs to follow up on a potential exposure. Thank you. Those are my comments for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Counselor Shuret.
Thank you, Council President. To, to you, to the Health Department Director, Sharon Cameron, I always lean on you for advice throughout the years on different things that has pertaining to health, obviously, throughout the system. Can you, at this point, because I had a lot of questions about over the past months, qualifications? Can you, I know you do not like to do this, but I'm going to ask you to do this this one time. Can you just go over your resume so people in the public can understand your qualifications for where you come up with your, your suggestions? If I may?
I have an undergraduate degree in biology from Harvard College. I have a master's in public administration from the JFK School of Government, also at Harvard. I spent a year in, about nine months, at the Salem Board of Health. Then I went to the State Department of Public Health, where I spent 14 years in various roles in the Bureau of Environmental Health, working with the Childhood Lead Poison Prevention Program, Division of Community Sanitation, and the Office of Emergency Medical Services. And after 14 years at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, I came to the City of Peabody as the Public Health Director, and I've been here for 15 years.
Thank you, Sharon. And again, I know you tend to get a little shy in letting us all know what your qualifications is, but I do believe, I don't think this has ever been said, I want people to know in the city, what, what your qualifications is, and it's remarkable, and it's outstanding. Even though sometimes what you tell me is not what I want to hear, I do listen to it very clearly because you are the expert, and we do base our opinions on the experts. So I do appreciate that. And again, my, my thought process is to do whatever we can to get to what, quote, "back to normal." We have asked numerous people in our school departments, our school department committee has voted to go back to public sessions, and I think, in my opinion, as best we can, within the guidelines of obviously what the Health Department is suggesting, that we try to accomplish. And with that being said, if we go to a hybrid of some people staying home, zooming in, and not allowing the public to come in, we're basically just adding to the process that we are having now for us to come in, in public, who feels that they can. Is it possible to use a lower room of the City Council, if it's the lobby, to have people, if they were going to come in, in person, and limited the amount of people coming in and out during a hearing? Right? I have that, that's...
Just for clarification, are you talking about counselors, or are you talking about public?
No, I'm talking about the, the public. If the counselors who wish to be live are upstairs in the Higgins, right, and I've been listening to a couple of people, people talk, and we have, we asked that the petitioner to be upstairs in the Wiggins. No, the petitioner's not to be there?
No, the petitioner, as well as the public, would both be zoomed in.
Okay. Even better, even better. But if we allowed a portion of people who come, who want to be in public, to, to approach the council through a Zoom in the City Hall itself, but lower level, is that something, is it more complicated to do that? Is there something to allow people who actually want to come to City Hall and voice their, their concerns through a Zoom network that we have set up, just in case people can't do it at home?
Through PAT, through their cell phones, and through their computer, they have the same access. I don't know if we'd be able to set up a remote station here at City Hall for the public to zoom in, because then if there was, let's say, a line of people that wanted to access that, there goes your social distancing. I don't know how that would work. I mean, I can defer to Sharon Cameron or that, or to the mayor, if we want to respond. I just don't know how, logistically, that would work in the confines of City Hall.
We would have to, we would have to have someone at the door, allowing one person in, you know, at a time, and six feet distance outside, if people want to do that. Now, I'm not sure if that will be a widely-used option, but is that an option also? Just throwing it out there.
I don't, I don't envision that as being an option. If, if they can't be in person, I don't know if we have the mechanism in place technologically, technology, technology-wise, to set up stations for somebody to be able to zoom in and to maintain social distancing. I just don't see that as a possibility. Sharon? Or Mr. Mayor?
I do have concerns about if you allowed some members of the public in and capped it. First of all, you're increasing the potential for virus transmission anytime you're bringing more people together in an enclosed space, but, you know, on top of all the complexities it adds to the logistics, and I think complexities can be worked through, logistics can be worked through. My major concern would be if you've capped it, that the people, you're going to have potentially, people kind of jockeying for position outdoors and, you know, really trying to access the building and not caring about the social distancing piece because they know there's a very limited amount of access. So I would be very concerned about that model.
And, Mr. President, if I could jump in, yeah, I, I agree. I would strongly recommend against that. However, if the council did want to vote to have public access to the building, then we certainly would need a number of employees here, you know, one at the door, one inside, you know, maybe multiple people inside. So, yeah, that would require some, some additional employees. One thing I did want to say, because it was a great deal I agreed with Mr. Charis on, but I just want to be very clear, he had mentioned that the school committee had voted on a hybrid model for the reopening of schools. We haven't had that vote yet. That's being taken up now. There was a proposal made by our Superintendent Josh Fadala to, to move forward with a, a hybrid model and to give an opt-out to parents that are uncomfortable, uncomfortable with having their children go. They could opt-out and do full remote. That hasn't been voted on by the city, excuse me, by the school committee. We do have a meeting next Tuesday, August 18th, in which we will take up that discussion, but I just don't want anybody to think that we've already voted on that. I think there's still a great deal of discussion. We've been getting a lot of input from people, parents, teachers, administrators, on that very thing. So we still have a little ways to go before a final decision and a final vote. Just want to make sure that nobody thought a decision had been made yet.
Yeah, through the President.
Counselor Shuret.
Thank you, Counsel President. Mr. Mayor, yes, I don't, I did not mean the district, school-wise. I was talking about the school board members going. So, yes, I want to be crystal clear that no vote has been made about the school itself operating, only that the school board had made a motion for them to meet at a open session or somewhat of an open session. But I do, thank you for making that clear to me, that I might have misled. I do not want to have that happen. I was just speaking about the school board meetings themselves, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. So everyone knows, school has not voted on it. But again, Sharon Cameron, I certainly respect and, and take your advice very seriously and to the thought of how I would voice my vote. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Shuret. Counselor Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sharon Cameron, for joining us this evening, and for the, all the recommendations that you suggested in your opening. If you could get those to us in, in advance of the next meeting, in case we don't resolve this tonight, that would be helpful to have that in advance to go over. Thank you. And, and I'm glad, and I agree, I'm glad that the mayor mentioned this, and I agree with him, that allowing petition is in and not the public would certainly be an Open Meeting Law violation, so I'm glad that he opened with that. And, let's see. Sharon, you did also remind us that the Governor's Order does not to limit the number of individuals in indoor meetings or outdoor meetings, does not apply to municipal legislative bodies, so that, that doesn't apply to us, but I do understand that you're giving recommendations as best practice through the CDC, correct? And it's 25 people inside a building is the suggested safest number?
That is, that is the correct guideline, yes. 25 in a single enclosed space.
Right. And given the fact that Peabody City Hall, and the Wigan Auditorium in particular, is probably the biggest, oldest, draftiest building that we have in the city, it's certainly not hermetically sealed, it's, it's, you know, would that be a, and again, given its size, I have no idea how many square feet that beautiful, huge auditorium is, but would that be taken into consideration, given that there would be less of a spread in such an environment?
I think ventilation and size does matter, but the, the guidance I'm referring to is the guidance that has been issued by the Governor's Office, and they have not made a distinction. They have, for other venues, they have specified a maximum of, I believe it's eight people per 100,000 square feet of space, but with a cap of no more than 25. So recognizing that there are some variations for spacing, they have set that 25 is an absolute cap, no matter what the size of the spaces. But again, as you've pointed out, you're not bound by that, but that is what the current best public health guidance is.
We're not, we're not bound by that, and kind of applying some common sense, we should be able to feel safe with 25, with 30 people in that building, and we even have a second tier. I'm not suggesting, and I'll get into this in a minute, I'm not suggesting we stuff it to the gills by any means. What I'm suggesting is if the cap is 25, and we have 11 counselors, and we open up the possibility that the counselors may choose to continue to operate by Zoom, and so we would have less the number of counselors, and, and we would have two clerks, I believe. So say, let's just say we have 10. Then that leaves us another 15 that, again, we're very experienced at this point about what is a controversial matter and what is not, and the Governor's Order, again, allows that we not hear special permits if we feel that we can't meet the guidelines of social distancing, and we won't be bound by constructive approval, that it be approved because we didn't hear it. Again, that's been run by Don Con, the City Solicitor, and that is his understanding as well, that he has written to us upon our request. So if we were to meet as a council in the Wigan Auditorium and open it to the public, and to allow them face-to-face access to their representatives, us, we know that there's usually, if it's a meeting with not much excitement on the agenda, we might have two or three, maybe five regulars that show up. They may and may not show up now because of the COVID-19, and they may choose not to. But I think that we need to look at allowing them the option to attend if they wish to, or any other member of the public who wishes to attend to get FaceTime with city counselors. I've had members of the public over the years show up at city council meetings on Thursday because they know the council's going to be there, and they want a personal face-to-face conversation, and it's kind of like our office hours, because we don't have any. We all work full-time. A phone call from a constituent sometimes isn't enough for them, and they want to see us face-to-face, and a lot of people rely on that, and which is why we have a lot of regulars that do show up at council meetings for that very personal face-to-face interaction that, that we owe them. So was there any discussion, along the same lines as where Counselor Shuret was going, was there any discussion at your reopening committee meetings that you've had over the past several months about if, if we misjudged, which I just don't see us misjudging a controversial issue, erring on the side of caution, we wouldn't hear any special permit for the controversial issues, aside from construction, development projects, would be marijuana, something like that. We wouldn't hear that because too many people would want to, we're experienced enough to know what a controversial issue is at this point. So if we had 25 people to include the councilors and another two people showed up, and we can count that high. And we can, has there been any discussion as to if you want to pick up a sub, a sub shop, they figured it out a while ago, they'll text you when your order is ready and they'll bring it out. You text them when you're there, they'll bring it out to your car. If we have people that want to show up for a public hearing, was there any discussion at these reopening meetings about them notifying us in advance so we can tabulate in advance and calculate if we need to count them as they come in? If we need to say, we will text you when it's your turn at the podium? Again, I don't see us not forecasting the number of people that will be at our meetings. I don't see this as insurmountable or overwhelming. I mean, CVS grocery stores figured this out within days because when you're an essential employee or your livelihood depended on it, you figured it out. So was any of these suggestions, ideas discussed at the reopening meetings, would councils like to talk about that? Again, we don't have to make this decision tonight. The mayor, thank you, you reminded us that they're here because we had requested they be here and present to us about opening in August. And thank you for that reminder, Mayor. But we don't have to decide tonight. We can, but we need all more of this information and we need to discuss these things so that when and if we do decide to go to the Wigan Auditorium, we will have hashed these things out with a plan. So that may not happen tonight, maybe it will. But I'm glad that we are having the discussion. And with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the council. Thank you.
Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just wanted to make a few comments here as we're going along. Thank you so much, Health Director Cameron, for joining us tonight. Just by my count, we have 16 people on this call tonight. So that leaves nine people to participate in person if we were to go with that model where we had in-person participation at a meeting. I am going to go with the 25 cap recommendation that Sharon had recommended for the sole reason that everybody on this council has a wonderful background and certain experiences, but there's one health professional here who's an expert in public health. Nobody else is. So I don't want to call anybody out, but everybody else is just an idea of what you think might be appropriate, what might not be appropriate. We're still dealing with a global pandemic here. Everybody's made sacrifices. I understand that we all want to be back in front of everybody and have our constituents have the opportunity to look at us face-to-face. Unfortunately, they might have to make that sacrifice. And I'm willing to entertain the thought of voting in, or having the council attend in person, but I think to open this up for the public, to participate in any capacity outside of a telecommunicative way is just reckless on our end while we're still, listen, we say in one hand, we want to applaud Sharon for all the hard work that she's done in leading us through this pandemic. And then in the other hand, we're saying, oh, well, we don't really understand or agree with your assertion there. In my mind, we can't have it both ways. If we want to be there and vote in person, I'm fine with that, but I think to open it up for the public is not a good idea. Thank you.
Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would echo Councilor Welton's comments. He hit it right on the spot. I would add just my own personal opinion, and I do want to thank, like the other councilors, thank Mayor Brett Benkow coming and Director Cameron, not only for coming tonight and helping us, you know, debate this, but also remiss if I didn't comment on Director Cameron's work over the past few months, dealing with this ongoing pandemic. It's been outstanding, her and her staff. So thank you. I guess quite simply, everyone craves a return to normalcy. You know, we're dealing with this. And I know one of the things that I enjoy is coming down to City Hall to meet with my fellow councilors and debate the topics and do that work. But, you know, I guess each of us is going to have to weigh what they feel, whether it be their own personal health or the whole process. And I'm not going to comment on my own personal issue or health issues. We all work with others in our other lives. We have family members who may be at risk. We don't want to put them at risk. At the end of the day, right now, this Zoom application or process or online, in my opinion, you know, dealing with this, it's actually allowed a lot of other people to, who may not want to come down to City Hall, get a babysitter, who have to work at 7:30. They can come down and take part in that process. So while not perfect, it's not what we all want, it has allowed people to have access. And I think whatever we decide to do, having a hybrid capability, whether it be in person or the continued Zoom usage for not only the public but possibly councilors, is great. All that being said, at the end of the day, right now, what we would be doing is if we decide to go meet as a group in person at the Wiggins Hall, we're really doing what we're doing now. And I don't think that moves us forward as, you know, a deliberative body, in my personal opinion. I think this presents the ability for people to take part in it. We'd be on Zoom. I don't see how coming into City Hall at this point in time during a pandemic is ideal and just meeting as a group without any participants, whether it be applicants or the general public. And lastly, I think it creates an undue, at this point in time, with all the other duties they have, an undue burden on the municipal employees, additional cleaning, whether it be the night of the meeting. And also, quite honestly, on Thursday evenings, the City Hall employees all work later and we possibly having them have to go home early to work remote. And I just, you know, all that being said, I'm not in favor of having in-person council meetings at this time. I just wanted to get that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tcheco. You're on mute. I'll go back to you, Councilor Tcheco. Any other councilors wish to speak? Councilman Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just through you to Councilor Welton, just for clarification on your stance, I was a little confused. Are you open to having public attend with a 25-person cap and to continue going, operating by Zoom? Because that was what I was, that's what I heard, and then I thought you said that you weren't, didn't want the public there. I was confused.
Yeah, thank you for asking, Councilor Manning. Just to clarify, if the vote was to have the council return, you know, I would be open to further discussion on that, to have any public present. I think, given the health risks that Public Health Director Cameron had mentioned, in light of her comments, I would not be in favor of opening up to the public because aside from a health concern, I feel it's inequitable to determine who can or cannot meet that threshold of 25. So thank you for asking, so I could clarify.
Thank you. Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So just for clarification, if I wasn't clear, I'm open to keeping the cap at 25 to include whatever councilors attended, open it at 25 to allow the public to attend if they wish to and to continue to utilize Zoom for both councilors and the public and petitioners. And with limiting the special permits that are scheduled, that we know are going to exceed the 25 cap in the Wigan Auditorium. So that's where I'm headed. And then, then, as I said before, we can figure out how to, you know, allow people to come in and speak if by chance we misjudge and we go over the 25. You know, people are doing it everywhere, every day. So just for clarification, to be fair to Councilor Welton, I asked him to clarify, and I think maybe I wasn't clear to him or to others. So for me to clarify, that's where I'm at. Thank you. Oh, and Karen, excuse me, Sharon, were any of those ideas, again, that Councilor Shuret and I offered, were they discussed at this reopening committee that you've been working on and with for the past five months? Any of those suggestions or ideas, were they discussed?
There was only one of the reopening committee meetings that addressed the question of whether the council should return. That was the most recent meeting, and we did not discuss the specific issues that you've raised here in terms of the logistics of how to make it work if you were to open it to the public.
Okay, thank you. So maybe this is an initial meeting then, since it hasn't been discussed at all collectively, so that maybe we should have another meeting on this to hash it out because having a 20-minute initial meeting on such an important subject, I don't think we're going to get to where we need to be or where we should be at this point in time. Thank you.
Councilor Tcheco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I on now? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, great. So, yeah, I thought this was just a discussion as to whether councils themselves wanted to go back to the Wiggins. I wasn't aware that we were going to discuss petitioners and the public. Now, obviously, I think we all want the public, you know, in the building. I think we prefer it that way. We'd all like to be in the building. It's just, it's not feasible at this point. I don't see the benefit of limiting it to 25, you know, that might work in the fall, wintertime. I'm not really sure about keeping 10 people in the lobby and 25 upstairs. It would be very difficult to monitor where the holding space was for any excess people. And I understand that in most council meetings, there are only five or six people that show up regularly. Doesn't guarantee that that's going to happen. So essentially, I was prepared to say that I'm more than comfortable going back personally, but I don't speak for any of you. And I think that it's an option available. My first thought was that every councilor here, with the exception of two, are over 50 years old. I'm borderline 48. But, you know, we're starting to get into that dangerous territory for some people here. And I'm not sure if councils feel comfortable. And I actually, like all of you, I hope that nothing happens to any of you. I've never been one to panic about this virus. I clean my hands, I keep my workspace clean, and I do the best I can and I live my life. I wear my mask when mandated. With all that said, I just don't, with the amount of traffic as far as employees in City Hall, I don't feel comfortable. I think that I would return to City Hall personally. If another council chose to Zoom in, great, I thought that was the decision we were going to make. I don't see this as some sort of stand that, you know, we're doing the right thing for PBD, whether somebody stays home or comes to the council meeting. This seems to be working fine, at little risk. As far as the assertion that, you know, people don't hold office hours or meet with the public, I meet with the public every single day doing this job. I think most councilors do. So people don't generally come to City Hall to see me. They come to my house, they call me, I meet them at their houses. I've done that pretty much since this pandemic's begun. You know, I was kind of shocked. I thought I had missed a meeting because I read in the newspaper that we had agreed to allow petitioners and developers at the City Hall. I don't quite know where that came from, but I would not be in favor of that. I think that if anything, it would just be the City Council. And one quick question for Director Cameron. Although we're exempt from the governor's rule as a legislative body, are we exempt from the 25 limit, 25-person limit? Or is just the 11 members of the legislative body in PBD's case that we're exempt from from meeting together? We can meet together, but does it say that we can have an unlimited amount of the public in the building?
So the language says that the order of the gathering does not apply to any of the following businesses, organizations, any municipal legislative body, the general court or the judiciary. So that has been interpreted to mean your legislative body conducting your business, so yourselves and the people who are before you for the conduct of that business, whether they be petitioners or people there within interest who want to participate. That's how it's been interpreted.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, if it makes people feel better and they want to limit it to 25 people at City Hall, I don't really see the purpose of it. I think it's just grandstanding. But 11, there's 11 councilors, there's a city clerk, sometimes an assistant city clerk that brings us up to 13. You know, like Councilor Welton said, we have, you know, some IT personnel that are going to be mandated to be with us while we're doing this. We might be able to get eight or nine people in. We then have to have employees involved in that process to actually stop people outside the door and hold them. It's actually, I don't see the purpose of it, other than to make some sort of political statement. As far as me meeting with the public, I'm always available. The number's published, but I would be in favor of councilors having their own personal decision to return to City Hall. If you choose not to, great, but not in favor of allowing petitioners and/or the public in the building until it seems safe to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further councilors wish to, Councilor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to everybody for taking the time to be here tonight, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon. Sharon, can you, first, I want to thank Councilor Turkoff for reminding me how old I am. I appreciate it, John. Sharon, can you please tell me what level of concern now is in PBD? Is it a moderate, did you say?
Yeah, we are classified as a moderate-risk community, and that is between four and an average daily case rate of four to eight new cases a day. And unfortunately, between the time when the governor first published his risk maps earlier in the week and when he republished them yesterday with updated data, our rates have increased even more. So we are still in the moderate-risk range, but we have increased, and it's a trend that we're concerned about and we're keeping very close watch on.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask the mayor a question about reopening, but I just want to echo a couple of things. Councilor O'Neill, you're spot on, in my opinion. I really didn't want to go Zoom because it was foreign to me. But once we got all trained on it and I have a comfort level now, and safety-wise, I feel better being on Zoom than us all hunkering down in the Wigan. I personally won't be attending. I've made the decision a while ago not to attend in person. I don't understand the need right now of why we're doing it, what the urgency is of doing it. I know we want to get back into the public's eye and have the public feel like we're providing leadership, but to me, leadership is doing the right thing health-wise for the community. I got to be honest with you. I really think that we're going down a path that I'm not sure the purpose of it is. But that being said, Mayor, can you please talk about the reopening of City Hall and, you know, milestones, dates, and what you have in mind? And I thank you for, right out of the chute, you said you really don't believe that we should be meeting our August meeting in the Wigan. So Mayor, if you would, please. Through you, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Gould, and good points. Yeah, I guess let me speak to that a bit. And this has been a real good discussion to hear different opinions and to get everybody's point of view. And I'm certainly very respectful of differing opinions as to when and how we're going to open up City Hall. But I do want to make it clear that, you know, ultimately, when we open City Hall, separate and apart from city council meetings, because that's under your authority, but when we open City Hall, that's going to be my decision. I do think that as mayor, I act, and this is a lead I've taken certainly from Mayor Bonfanti, Mayor Terregian, that they always saw themselves as custodians of City Hall, and that's kind of how I view the job as well. And, you know, I get opinions, as I always do, from a number of people, most notably over the last several months, the opinions I've gotten from Sharon Cameron, who provides her guidance, her suggestions based on her thorough research, her intensive evaluation of the data that she gets, and the feedback she receives from her colleagues and state officials and different medical personnel. But in her team, Brenda Wolf, our nurse director, Chassie Robinson, our city nurse, and all the nursing team, I get a lot of opinions and suggestions from them, but from also the reopening committee people here at City Hall, our union members. And I always take in advice and opinions from them. And, but ultimately, the decision will be made by me as to when it's open. I'm in constant communication with other mayors and town managers, certainly on the North Shore and in the greater Boston area. I'm very well aware of what most communities are doing. of what most communities are doing and where they are in terms of reopening. And I think a number of communities are ahead of us in reopening. I'm being much more cautious, much more conservative, much more careful in how we're doing things here. And there's a number of factors for that, and I'll speak to them. There are three factors as to why I think I'm taking a little bit more of a cautious approach. The first one is just our building. It is an old building, as was mentioned earlier, 1883. It is large in some sense because we have a big Wigan auditorium, but our offices are very closed spaces. And in much of those offices, there's no way that we can meet the governor's guidelines in terms of social distancing and meeting those specific guidelines from the governor. And that's put a very difficult onus on all of us here at City Hall to put in Plexiglas, to put in dividers, and to come up with a very functioning plan to meet the safety needs of our residents that would come to City Hall, but also, very importantly, those that work here, our workforce needs to be, needs to feel safe. And our offices right now, much of the offices are very confined spaces, and there's no way that we could meet those guidelines. The other thing, too, that's taking place at City Hall, and this was something that I proposed to you and the council voted in support of this, was a project that we did at City Hall we've just completed a couple of weeks ago, in which we did a whole redesign of the second floor, much of the second floor. We had the community development office space, the building inspector's office space, some other important positions that meet the public. Those were, that work was ongoing over the last few months. There was a short break when the pandemic really hit. We've been able to do some work, slowly open things up. But there's been a great deal of work that was taking place at City Hall over the last few months. We've had a great deal of workers coming in and all the different trades, people coming in and out, doing that work that was necessary. Thankfully, that work is complete. A number of the building inspectors and a number of the community development officials are now coming in more and more to the office. They were actually relocated for a period of time over at the Department of Public Works building. So that was taking place as well and made me a little bit wary and uncertain of moving forward with the plan. The second reason is just our personnel and our workforce in general. I can't speak to specifics on our employees, but there were a number of factors why I wanted to take a much more cautious, conservative approach to make sure that our our needs were met for our employees, our workforce, working with the union officials to make that happen. And then the third is really just comes down to the data. For a while, it was really encouraging. June numbers, you know, really had flatlined in some respects. There were a number of days that we were having, some in a row, we were having no positive cases. And the reopening committee, which, you know, Counselor Rosignol, you've been a part of, thank you for that. You bring a lot to that committee. And I wanted to have somebody from the City Council on that committee, as was requested. And, you know, we've had a number of meetings to discuss those, that data. And we were looking at a July opening, mid to late July, to try to take, you know, utilize those numbers, kind of that had flatlined, to get, to have that open. Then what's happened, though, is we have seen, and Sharon can go through the numbers if you'd like, we've seen a spike over the last few weeks in our numbers. They've gone up, and I think it was kind of understandable response because we had been opening things up. You know, some of the sports and some graduation events and just restaurants opening and just people getting back to a little bit more normal life. But our numbers have gone up over the last few weeks. And now the governor's noticed that has put us in a moderate risk category, which is concerning, certainly. You know, we're not in a dangerous zone, but we are in a moderate risk zone. So that's concerning. So because of that, I definitely asked the reopening committee and some of the leaders in the city to take a little bit of a step back just until we can kind of see what these numbers mean and where we're going with these numbers. And I felt that that was the cautious, conservative, and appropriate response to this slight uptick in the numbers. You know, we have 174 deaths in this community, 174 deaths. You know, we have 889 recovered residents who've recovered from the disease, which is outstanding. We still have over 100 active cases. But we've had 174 deaths, and I don't see any reason to really jump back in and make some of these tough decisions at this point over the course of the summer. Certainly, I want to get back to normal. I want the city to get back to normal. I love people coming into City Hall. I'm meeting with people all the time. That has changed. And, you know, and I know, you know, I'm hoping that we can get back all the quicker, but to me, the cautious, conservative approach is the way to go. But one thing I do want to make very clear is that the work continues here at City Hall. The guidelines from the governor and state officials has always been from day one to try to do the work in a remote manner as much as possible, to do work remotely and have people home if they can be to continue the work. And but the important thing is that all the work is being conducted. And we're very fortunate. We have outstanding workers here. We have 68 employees here at City Hall, all with a very important task that they perform. And I take a great deal of pride, and we all should take a great deal of pride in the the great work that's taking place in each of the departments. And I'm going to mention a couple of the departments. I mean, first is our finance team. They're paying bills. They're collecting taxes and revenue. They're making payroll. They're overseeing our investments. They're handling our insurance claims, our retirement claims. All that work is taking place, and we have a great deal of people in City Hall doing that work. Our Board of Health, our Health Department, I don't really have to speak to the work that they've been doing, Sharon Cameron and her team, our inspectors. But without question, Sharon Cameron and her team has saved lives, and they've made a difference in this community. And that work is ongoing. That office has been as busy now probably more than any other time in recent memory, of course, because of the pandemic. Our city clerk's office, I mean, I think you can ask Allison how busy she's been handling vital records. And oh, that little thing we call an election that's coming up in a couple of weeks. And her office has been in every day, straight out, doing election work. Our human resources, taking care of the needs of the employees, taking care of health insurance issues. That work has been ongoing. Building inspector, community development, I could go on and on, talking about all the different work that's taking place. Our Department of Public Works, our Park and Rec Department, trying to keep our city clean and attending to this massive City of PBD water, sustainable water and water infrastructure project we're doing, which is really taking shape, and we're getting to the tail end. I know it's been painful at moments, but we're really getting to the tail end, and it's going to make a major difference for us in the months and weeks ahead. But this is all, this is all stuff that's taking place, and thankfully, we all have our employees doing that, doing that great work. Right now, what I'm looking at is, we're looking at getting a tent. We're having real discussions about getting a tent out in front of City Hall on nice days and allowing people to come to City Hall for some specific requests. And then as of September 1st, I want to open it up for appointment only, to have those type of meetings for appointments only, and then just build from there. Again, I'm being cautious. I'm conservative, but ultimately, I'm going to make the decision I think is best for the city and our employees and our residents as to when we open. But no one wants to open up more than I do. And but I just wanted to thank you for your work. These are not easy decisions, but I want to respect the authority, again, of the council and you know, and try to make it happen as best I can with Sharon Cameron to meet your needs and your requests. You have a great deal of work on your plate. A lot of difficult decisions are upcoming. And, you know, I want to try to make it work as best I can for all of you. So thank you again. Hope everybody's doing well. And please reach out if there's issues that are upcoming in any way that I can help. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, if I may, do I still have the floor?
Yes, you still have the floor, Counselor Gould.
Mr. President, what in your mind did you have for, is there a vote that you'd like to see taken tonight?
I'll let everybody speak, and then I'll give you what my thought process is regarding this whole what we've had discussions about and what I think moving forward. You know what? I'll just do it now. In my opinion, just like the governor has had a phased approach to reopening the state, in my opinion, I think that that is a strong tactical approach to getting back to the Wigan. I disagree with having it opened entirely. I think monitoring the public access would be a logistical nightmare because unlike Counselor Manny Martin's point of where we know controversial issues, I disagree. I've been on the council, and I've been on the school committee. I've been in politics now. This is my 13th year. And I can tell you matter-of-factly that there have been a number of meetings I've attended either on the school committee or on the city council where I thought it would be a a quick meeting and it wouldn't be heated or discussion, and there wouldn't be a lot of people interest. And I get to the meeting and the exact opposite has happened. There's been a number of people because in their mind, it is a controversial issue. Whether it's a controversial issue in our mind, that is negligible, in my opinion. Whether it's a controversial issue in the public side, that's what matters because that's what's going to bring people to the Wiggins Auditorium. And I think us putting a cap on the number of people that attend the Wiggins, I think now you're really stifling the access to the public, and that's the last thing I want. We started this whole process via Zoom so that we could try to enact and enable the public to access as much as possible. And Counselor Gould, you hit the nail on the head in the beginning. It was a bumpy road in the beginning. It was a completely foreign medium for all of us. It was a completely foreign medium to the public to access. But I think in this new norm that we have, the public has been able to access this more than ever before. I think right now, if you look at PAT, there are people that are watching us that wouldn't necessarily in normal time. I think if you look on their computer and you look on the Zoom platform, there are attendees that wouldn't be here in normal time. So I think this access has opened doors for some people that wouldn't necessarily take the time to get in their car, find a babysitter, drive down to City Hall and spend two hours of their life, four hours of their life, depending upon our meeting, to sit at the Wiggins. With all of that said, my anticipation, like I said in the beginning, is to have a phased approach. I think through the discussions I've had with Sharon, I think the first step is the counselors that feel confident and comfortable going to the Wiggins do so, whether that's five of us, seven of us, nine of us, 11 of us, that's where we start, socially distanced with masks. And then from there, we start, and any counselors that don't feel comfortable, I agree with what Counselor Turco said earlier. If people don't feel confident and comfortable coming to the Wiggins, I completely understand that point of view. That we are in uncharted waters right now. This has never happened in any one of our lifetimes. So to navigate through these waters is unprecedented. And there's 11 of us, and we have 11 different ideals and 11 different ideas. So to get us all pulling in the same direction is difficult, but I know our final goal is to get back to what is and what was normal. My opinion, in the beginning, we have the counselors that feel confident and comfortable going back to the Wiggins. We do so. Any counselors that do not feel comfortable and confident in that manner, they're zoomed in as well as the public and as well as the petitioners. Once that format is established, and if all of a sudden the numbers go down, then we open it up further, and we continue to kind of open the envelope until we're back to a norm that is palpable to all of us and we're back to life as we know it. I don't know when that will be. Nobody does. Back in March, when this all started, I think it was the state said, well, for two weeks, we'll quarantine, and then everything will be back to normal. Well, obviously, that's not the case. So I don't know when we'll get back to some sort of normal. I don't think anybody does. But I think a staged and a systematic approach to opening back up, I think, is prudent. I think that that's where we are right now. And I know Sharon Cameron mentioned that the numbers are going up, and they are. And that, I think, is because people aren't taking the social distancing to heart. I think people aren't wearing their masks when they're out with people. So I think the expectation was to see some sort of bump. Being in healthcare and being out there, I know that, yes, the numbers are going up, but the good thing, the fortunate thing is the critically ill patients are not going up to the degree that they were in the very beginning. So so there is some at least solace in that. Long-term effects, that's a whole different topic, and that's a whole different ballgame because I think that's another unknown. But me personally, my approach to this would be the council comes back first, to whatever degree that is, whoever feels confident and comfortable coming back, but we still zoom in. The counselors that don't feel comfortable coming back, we still zoom in the petitioners, and we still zoom in the public until we have a more normalized normal.
So, Mr. President, are you going to take a vote tonight?
I'm willing to put that to a motion, but I wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that I want to, I want to hear from every counselor before we put any motion on the floor. And I know Counselor Sasso hasn't spoken yet. I don't know if he wants to weigh in, and I know Counselor Missoula hasn't spoken yet. So I want to see if those two want to, Counselor Missoula. I'll turn it to you.
You, Counselor Gould, you still have the floor.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, the body as one is a reflection of us individuals as one body is a reflection of our leadership and our thought process. You know, we have the choice not to go in and stay on Zoom, but the message that we send to the public by, in my opinion, being reckless, we have the chief executive officer of the city saying he doesn't believe we should be in the Wigan. We have the Health Department, Sharon Cameron, well-respected, has major concerns about the moderate level increase now to the virus. And we, as a body, are going to vote and say, you know, regardless of all of those concerns in what, you know, is out there, I think we ought to go back to the Wigan. And you know, if we vote as a body, it's a reflection of us as individuals, to be honest with you. We do, excuse me?
Yep, no finish.
No, we do have the right to stay home and do it on Zoom, but I really believe that we, as one body, need to send the correct message to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. It's just I'm going to hold comment. I'm going to let the counselors that haven't spoke yet have a turn. So Counselor Missoula.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was a little excited about this meeting this evening because I thought we've been away from City Hall for quite a while. And as far as I'm concerned, sitting in City Hall, what's important to me is special permits. When we have a special permit, you know, I like to see the petitioner, I like to see the attorneys. I like to see the audience. I like to see, you know, the person get up, all in favor, any opposed. I like to look at them, and that's how I make my decision. And I'm still comfortable, as I'm sure all the councils are, with the decision they make with all the information they get, because every one of this council are intelligent enough to know what they're looking for. But I'm just a little more comfortable looking at the person. And well, what I've heard this evening, I've gotten a little bit out of everyone, including you and the mayor and Sharon, she's amazed, so I can't say enough. I've learned a lot this evening. I mean, I knew a lot anyways, but I've learned a lot. I thought I would be comfortable coming into the City Council, I mean, like this week or next week. But after listening to every one of you, I said, wait a minute. That might be the right move for me, but I don't think it's the right move for everybody. So I want to sit back a minute and digest this. I'm taking in a lot this evening, and I just want to make sure that I'm making the right decision for myself and the people that I represent. And and you hit it on the head right now. I mean, I totally agree with everything you said. Is this the right time to do it? I don't know. You know, I, that's why I was going to ask you, Mr. Chairman, when you asked, should we take a vote tonight? I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, you could recess it till our next meeting to at least let me digest this. So I hope that's how I feel, Mr. Chairman. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Missoula. Counselor again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add my thanks to the mayor and Director Cameron for being here, participating in this meeting and providing all this valuable information. in this meeting and providing all this valuable information. As some councilors have said, and I would add my voice to this, I understand the desire to get back to something that's closer to normal and take steps that uh might be a move in that direction. Um, the experience I had had in my professional life is the company I worked for started down a path of returning, uh laying out steps to return people to the office, uh but has put all that on hold based on what's happened around the country and around the state in in recent weeks. Um, so to the point that was uh just made by Counselor Lamont Solis, so the question raised, I guess, is the right time? Um, you know, based on, based on the data and based on what we see locally, uh I'm not convinced that it is. PBD is now classified as as a moderate risk level, that was reiterated tonight by the uh Director of Health. I I think that even in a best-case scenario, the meeting at the Wigan Wigan would involve uh a lengthy list of kind of cumbersome precautions that um, you know, it's it's time and expense associated with that. Uh, and again, it's it is a risk reward there is that is it, you know, what do we really want on to take those? Uh, and it may have been Counselor O'Neill that mentioned, you know, the we're not just, it's not just the impact on us, but it's the impact on other City Hall employees that might might get bumped uh as a result of our uh desire to get back. I'm also a little bit concerned, I'm a lot concerned frankly, about um a partial return of councilors in terms of how that might create an imbalance in participation. You know, we wouldn't know until we're actually there. Um, at least we know now, in this in this format, everybody's on uh equal footing. Um, I have great confidence in you, Mr. President, in terms of your ability to run an effective meeting. Um, but as you've pointed out a number of times, this is uncharted territory and and you know, even uh with the the skills that you possess in 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 running a meeting, uh it's just gonna add another level of complexity there. Um, you know, if if councilors aren't coming back, obviously, people are gonna be making their own decisions, uh you know, and I don't feel it's appropriate for us to put even any kind of indirect pressure on councilors to disclose any kind of information about underlying medical conditions or family circumstances, things, it's it's private information. So um, I know, I know, I know that that's not what you're, that's not anybody's intention, but but I don't want that to be an unfortunate uh unanticipated consequence of of taking an action like this. Um, you know, again, we talk about leadership. We're being told that what we're doing now is the safest alternative. Um, so I I think that if we wanna send a message to the community uh that, you know, we need to limit gatherings, we need to limit our gathering and we should, so that leadership by example in this instance means to to continue what we're continue what we are currently doing, in in my opinion. Um, I'd like, I'd like to uh stay in this mode until uh there's greatest certainty around the data, uh and that we're comfortable that all councilors can can return uh to the Wigan safely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor again. Counselor Sashla.
Thank you, Counselor President, for the opportunity to talk. I appreciate that. And I want to say a thank you to the mayor and to Health Director Cameron for coming out and guiding us tonight and sharing your opinions and factual data. Um, I don't have a lot to say on the matter. I do find it's a very, it's a very personal decision in nature. I don't feel comfortable, not what I feel comfortable in trying to convince anybody uh whether to show up or not show up to the meeting. It's such a personal issue in nature for many of the reasons why my previous council stated. Um, you know, the only thing I do know is that when I do come back or when we do come back, or I'll say, when I come back to City Hall, what does, what I do know, and since I've served on the council, is it really has always been important to me um to have the public there. You know, uh, I started off, uh, my first year, a very controversial issue being billboards and um and, you know, there's been other issues as I've as I've had in my career on the council. And so to me, it's always been so critical to have the public here, to feel the energy, to have the interaction. And and yes, I get emails and meet with um constituents, as Counselor Turco said, and 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 some, some do show up on Thursday night out of the blue and and that happens too. And so I think everyone has, you know, very good points. Um, but to me, it's always been so critical to have that moment of truth, so to speak, when you show up at the Wigan and you walk in and you really can get an idea of of what's going on. And that's what's been somewhat frustrating to have um special permit hearings and not have the public there. I think um, I think we've certainly, I think, Counselor President, you've done a tremendous job under extreme circumstances. I think we've all uh, you know, done the best we can, but um still, from a personal point of view, it's been frustrating and I don't enjoy uh, you know, having to do it this way, but I understand, you know, that we have to. So for me personally, um, you know, it, you know, having twenty-five people and some people there and not some people there and not the public there, you know, you know, I just, at this point, I guess, until we can open it up and really have people there, I don't, I don't really see the value. And I actually, previous Counselor McGinn just said it, I do think there would be some things, cumbersome things that would have to happen, not that they couldn't happen, they could clean up and do that, but uh, he said, and I and I certainly, as I'll close this, I don't wanna try and convince anybody uh to do, wouldn't, that is, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that at all. I think it's a personal decision, I respect whatever uh counselor does feel comfortable. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sashla. Counselor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, yeah, you know, there's been a lot from this tonight and um I don't, I don't know if we're ready for a vote this evening, but I do, one thing I really would suggest um is that we at least get our procedures that were being proposed, at least in writing, so we know what we're voting for. Uh, options that would include, you know, whether it be the hybrid uh with just council personnel and then maybe and and then the phases on what we're looking for, so at least we have a working document that can be reviewed by legal, health, everybody, that's all of the stakeholders, um and including so then the public can see what the rules are and how we're gonna operate based on this. I I am, you know, I'm a little concerned that if we just do it based off of um, you know, this is what we're gonna do, I just, I think that would be the, I'm willing to help out on it. Um, you know, I forward a lot of emails to Sharon uh based on the stuff that's going on statewide um and where they're at with the phase and very familiar with them, but uh I really do think we need a working document of some sort that we can all uh relate to, have a baseline. And then I think it would make um, so we can all relate to where we're at, what we wanna do and where we're going. Um, I think that would be at minimum of what we get out of tonight, I think would would be helpful for us moving forward um to if if, because I mean, based on what I'm hearing from my fellow councilors, I respect all their opinions, that um, you know, I think there's some more thinking and and we've really uh flushed out some great ideas from tonight. So that would be my suggestion and again, I'm willing to help uh help with that in any way I can. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think as well, this has been good discussion this evening. Um, there was a lot of talk about leadership and I think uh leadership is also uh requires that we ensure that we don't exclude the public. And I want to remind the councilors that we continue to exclude those that do not have computer access or computers with microphones or internet access. And we have a large population of of folks in PBD uh that are affected by that. And that is evidenced by um each student in school getting Chromebooks uh so that they they don't have that impediment if they go to virtual learning. Uh, and that's great. Uh, we have socioeconomic disadvantaged, uh we have age and computer literacy issues that go along with folks trying to follow these uh their government inaction. So there's been a lot of talk about, you know, what city councilors want, what their needs are, um what City Hall uh recommendations are. But leadership is making sure that we represent everybody, just not those that can afford it and not those that we can see and just not to forget people. And we are, we do continue to exclude people who cannot access through the internet for those reasons. So for that reason, um uh in in the spirit of a healthy debate this evening and in effort to move forward, I absolutely will um support Counselor Rozignol's um suggestion to, in an effort to move forward, to get to a place where we're representing everyone and everyone is able to participate. I will support Counselor Rozignol's motion to um, if I heard it correctly, which is to open up Wigan Auditorium for uh council members that wish to uh attend and to continue by Zoom for um council members or petitioners or member, members of the public who are able to access in that uh venue uh to do so. So I will support that, uh Counselor Rozignol, and I also have to commend you as well for um being City Council President now. Um, I do commend you and I thank you for all the effort you put in and you've really um, you know, you you you're standing up well and I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Counselor President, and uh I'd like to echo the sentiments of Counselor Manning Martin as well. Um, you know, your leadership has been exceptional throughout this this difficult time. Um, I also agree with what Counselor Manning Martin is saying in terms of equity, I think I just have a different take on it. Um, I believe that if we, you know, move forward in an opportunity to allow some to participate but not to participate in person, that's more inequitable than the current uh setup that we have now. I think with the uh the process in which we're recessing the vote uh after we've heard um, you know, the arguments for for whatever issue is that we're looking at, uh allows constituents an opportunity to reach out, you know, over the course of two weeks. So I think it it by virtue of how it's set up, of course, it's not perfect. Um, but I think that is a more equitable solution than trying to accommodate some people and if we're going, if we're teasing this out and if the assertion is to try to get to the um twenty-five cap and allowing some to participate and some others not to participate, I feel like that is um a slippery slope where the intent might be to promote more inclusion, but unfortunately may result in a less equitable system that's set up than we currently have. So by no means is this perfect. Um, I certainly wanna get back to some normalcy as as soon as possible, but uh for that reason, I I again, I I would strongly, strongly oppose to bringing anyone back um to City Council from the public. Uh, you know, I think we're having a good discussion in terms of whether the council is comfortable with being there, but as far as opening it up to the public, even with a twenty-five person cap, I'm not in favor of it. I'm adamantly opposed uh to, based on uh Health Director Cameron's suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Neill.
Mr. Chairman, may I point of point of order, uh point of personal privilege? Uh, Counselor Welton, that isn't at all what I said. Um, I listened to what everyone said and I actually compromised in support of Counselor Rozignol's uh motion and I didn't mention the twenty-five, bringing public back in again. So I listened to to everybody else and what they said and in that I compromised and am supporting Counselor Rozignol. So I I don't know what you misheard, but let me just correct you. Thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Thanks for, thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick points that I think that my hope is that tonight, given the concerns and requests, especially by Counselor Melville's uh very uh station arguments, that we need more information before we make votes and how we analyze whether it be a staged approach. I think it would make sense to recess it. Uh, but I do wanna comment, um, a fellow counselor mentioned uh the specific statement that we have been excluding residents. I wanna go on record that that matter was litigated through the city. Um, lawsuit was filed on behalf of some residents uh by uh Mary Ellen Manning. That matter was adjudicated by a judge. It was denied, rejected, refuted. So I don't wanna hear any more comments about us excluding residents tonight. Thank you.
Point of, point of, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Manning.
Counselor O'Neill, I've got an opinion and you'll hear it. Don't tell me what you wanna hear from me and what you don't wanna hear from me. And quite frankly, I'm also pretty sick and tired of being called a grandstander when I'm defending the people that vote for me. Okay? So please don't tell me you don't wanna hear my opinion anymore. It may, you may not like my opinion or just the simple fact that I have one is what you probably have have an issue with, Counselor O'Neill. And in addition to that, the
Director, through the chair, please.
Is still open. So you can say it's been adjudicated and all you want, it is still open. Why don't you ask for an executive session for an update on it? Thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I just would comment that in the same, uh through you, I would ask Counselor Manning, the fact that I made a comment and would appreciate that that not be discussed, she would give me the same professional courtesy that she's asking from me. The fact is, is this matter is to discuss how we move forward in the council and there's ancillary comments about excluding. I felt it was inappropriate. I made that comment. In the same manner, I'm allowing her to speak and give her opinion, she should give me the same respect and professional courtesy. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. Any further discussion on this topic? Counselor Sherratt.
Thank you, Counselor President. Um, just wanna go right down to the small list that I have. Um, I do agree that, and I think we all do, that uh City Solicitor Khan will weigh in and we should look for what his um, his professional opinion is. And I wanna thank the mayor uh for his uh explanation of what's happening right now in City Hall. A lot of the things that he talked about when he explained that the uh, there was a lot of construction and things of getting done at City Hall and took the opportunity to have that done in a maybe a faster fashion since nobody was there, I says was very, very um enlightening and I'm sure, I wasn't totally aware of it and I'm sure the public wasn't also. So I I think that's great and his three stages of uh why he came to the discussion. The next one is uh, just to uh let the public know, I am always and have been and will be tomorrow morning a face-to-face meeting with a constituent of a, with an issue. I just don't want people to think that uh I'm I'm, there's no opportunity to meet with me face-to-face uh because there's, just pick up the phone and or email me, I'll be happy to. Um, I was really looking at just the councilors coming back. I know I I put it a a thought out there just to kind of stir the dirt a little bit, not the pot, but just the dirt, to see what we can um, if there was ways of thinking. Um, my thought process was, just at this time, the small steps, the councilors being able to come back to City uh Hall, to have a um a a meeting that way, basically, that's all we're doing with with this. We're only, we're allowing the process to still continue, but with whoever feels comfortable within that number to meet distantly at City Hall. Not really doing much more than that, really isn't. And and I applaud, those are the steps I think we we should do. And again, um, for members who cannot, I've lost a sibling to this disease. She's never diagnosed, but it certainly was putting your finger on it in the very, very beginning. And she was at a large gathering just prior of her passing. So I had many members of my family with immune deficiency and other issues that I was totally respect and actually would respect more for the counselor says, listen, I don't feel comfortable for my own well-being or people who are around me to say, I'm gonna continue to do Zoom and I will fight for that person to have that capability to do that. So I don't want any councilors to feel that if s- some come and others don't is any, anything but supportive. Again, uh it's, that's very, very close to me. The uh, again, so just the councilors coming. And if we have to meet at seven thirty on seven, on Thursdays, so any workers who are at City Hall, leave before any one of us show up. Uh, Counselor, you're in a small room right now with Allison and PAT up sis. We're kind of doing this already, so we're just expanding it. So I certainly would support that. I don't think there's anything uh wrong with that. Uh, I would be certainly opposed to, and I had been in the past, to ever question what's a controversial subject and what's not, what should be heard. and what's not, what should be heard, what should not. They all are treated equal. So if there's a hearing, there's a hearing. We have it on Zoom. We don't question if it's controversial or not. We can't judge that. So I will support going back, uh, members who like to go back to chambers, uh, for a first step. I think it's, uh, it does say, say things that we are moving. Uh, we haven't, the City Hall's been criticized about why they haven't been open. I think the mayor very well explained the reason why he has kept it closed. But I just think it's small steps. It, it works well for us, um, for the option for some members to come. And everything else stays the same. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll be very brief. This has been a, a real good discussion. Um, and, uh, I know all of us have kind of weighed in with our thoughts and it just seems that, um, there's still a lot up in the air. I, I was, I was thinking, and I wanted to make a suggestion, that maybe Sharon and I can maybe put, um, some information on paper, you know, maybe present a couple of options that, uh, can be voted on at, at, um, a future meeting. Um, you know, maybe we could set something up, uh, next week. I know there's been a request from our city solicitor to have an executive session meeting next week. So maybe we could, um, have an executive session meeting and piggyback that with, uh, another discussion on this very topic, maybe on Wednesday. I wanted to throw that out, but I think Sharon and I can maybe put some information together. Um, those points that Sharon made at the beginning of the meeting, some of the requirements that if we did, uh, have the meetings here at City Hall, that would be necessary. And I think that'd be very helpful, um, to kind of work through, uh, those ideas. And sounds to me, a couple of councillors might need a little time to think on things as well. So that, I just want to make that suggestion, maybe set something up for next week. This is an important topic. You know, we don't want to push it too far out. Um, but that might give some time to councillors to, to think on things, digest everything that was spoken about today. And then we can maybe get some information over to you, uh, to have that could aid in these discussions. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to either Mr. Nien or Allison. Are we okay technology-wise to have people zooming into the, into the Wigan? If that's the course of action we take?
Yes. Um, so our last meeting, um, with PAT, actually, I'll have Jim expound on that, but we had a great meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago regarding that topic and having a hybrid. Um, Mr. Palmer.
Yes. Good evening, councillors. Uh, we have been doing some testing for a hybrid meeting format, uh, where we actually completed our setup at the Higgins for the school committee and it works just the same. We put the Zoom screen up on the back. You use your existing microphones to speak through the Zoom system. Public can interact with you and at the discretion of the chair, uh, similar to what you're doing here. You just mute, unmute people as needed. Um, just working out some audio in the Wigan and we'll be good to go there as well.
Any further questions? Council Gould.
Oh, thank you.
Council Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really hoping you will make your motion so that we can at least have a benchmark, a jumping off point, uh, after all the discussion that went on tonight. I don't want it all to be, uh, to be for naught, uh, so I'm really hoping you'll make your motion. Thank you.
As the chair, I can't make a motion. I could step down, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave it up to the will of the council at this particular moment.
I'll, I'll make your motion, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I won't repeat it. I know Allison is there. I know we all spoke enough. Um, if you'd like to repeat it and, um, I will, um, uh, make it in the form of a motion. I'm happy to do so, so we can move forward tonight. Thank you.
So make a motion to phase in, in-person council meetings, starting the 27th in the Wiggins with attendees only being the council at this particular moment and only those councillors that choose to attend. And the rest will be zoomed in. That is the public, that is the petitioner and any councillors, um, that don't feel confident in coming to the Wiggins.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and I make that in the form of a co-motion with the, uh, City Council President. So moved.
You heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Council Gould.
Uh, what is the basis? Is it majority? Is it super majority? What are we doing here?
Uh, to me, this is just a majority vote. Cause the, the good thing about the format and through my discussions with Mr. Palmer and, um, this is not going to exclude anybody. If, if anything, it's going to just establish us being able to reopen in some manner, just like the state has opened, reopened in some manner. Now, obviously in the state level, they're retracting some of their opening because it went too far. I think in my opinion, opening in this manner with social distancing, with proper PPE and, um, just the council as a whole in the beginning maintains every facet of, um, appropriate behavior at this particular moment in time. That's just my opinion. And I know councillors, everybody here has stated for the last hour and a half, have differing opinions. And I, and I welcome those differing opinions and I, and I, that's the one thing that I love about democracy. We can come to, from different places and from different points of view and come to some sort of consensus. This is either going to be voted up or voted down and we move forward from here. Um, I, I, I need to absolutely thank every single member here for their input and for their knowledge regarding this. I, I think this has been a fantastic discussion, um, in, in some unprecedented times. So, um, Council Gould, you have the floor.
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions on the motion? Council Masoulis.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, I'm not changing my vote because I hadn't had a vote. I just wanted time to think about it. But I can live, I can live with, uh, with that motion. So, uh, I don't have a problem with it. And the reason I'm telling you that is I don't want you thinking or the audience out there thinking I'm flipping because I'm not. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Masoulis. Any further questions from councillors? Being non-roll call vote.
Councillor Welton.
I think Council O'Neill had a question. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council O'Neill. I apologize. Thank you.
Just, uh, in, in terms of the motion, it is what it is, but I guess there were a number of times tonight that fellow councillors, um, asked for more information, a broader discussion. I feel like we should respect that and what does it matter if we go out another week or two or whenever we meet next week to have a broader discussion. I just think it's, it's too soon to have a motion and I think it's putting people in a spot where they have to make a decision on something. They're still probably digesting tonight. That's my opinion. Thank you. I, I would vote down the motion.
Thank you, Council O'Neill. Uh, now, I, I will ask this question.
Move the question.
Roll call vote.
Councillor Welton.
Nope.
Sackler.
Yes.
Masoulis.
Yes.
Ghoul.
No.
Charis.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. O'Neill?
No.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
No.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to four.
Councillor Melville.
Um, Mr. President, um, I would request that the, that we get the, based off the suggestions of, um, uh, Sharon Cameron, the mayor, and Don Khan, that they also review the motion that passed and the procedures and that we get some sort of written guidance so that we have that, that we can be either shared with the public and amongst councillors, since this is essentially opening up a workspace, um, that that is, we got to be very specific. Um, I'm assuming it will go based off of what the current guidance that they're operating within City Hall, but, um, I do, I cannot emphasize enough how important it is to have this stuff written down so people can cite it and reference it. Thank you.
Is that in the form of a motion, Council Melville?
Do I need to make it in the form of a motion?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman. That last motion was to move the question, which there's no discussion in the past seven to four. So now we go to the original motion, which was our co-motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, you're correct. I apologize. On the motion, roll call vote.
Councillor Welton?
Nope.
Sackler?
Yes.
Masoulis?
Yes.
Ghoul?
No.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
No.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
No.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to four.
Thank you for the clarification, Council Manning Martin. Council Melville, on your last statement, would you like to entertain that as a motion?
I mean, I, I, do I need to make it as a motion or is it can be just a, I thought, I think the mayor and, uh, Sharon Cameron had said that they were going to provide that.
Okay. And you just want, um, uh,
I mean, anybody entering the building as an employee of the city, I'm sure he has to follow the guidelines set forth. So I just want to make sure that we have that and that the public is made aware of it and that's the circumstances why we're doing it, that we're doing it. Thanks.
One of the things I was going to do as council president, I was also going to actually ask, uh, Mr. Palmer and Sharon Cameron offline to, to set up the Wiggins so that it is socially distanced and what that was going to look like. And I was going to have that done sometime next week. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, I'll be very brief. I, I just wanted to, uh, recognize and thank our IT department. I had mentioned a number of things that are taking place in our city and I thought it was a terrific motion that had been made some time ago by the council to have an IT representative here at the meetings. And I wanted to thank, we're very lucky to have Frank, Peter, uh, Scott from our city IT department and Jim Palmer is terrific with PAT and Josiah. So, um, I just wanted to thank and recognize them. They've been a part of these meetings. They'll be a part of these future meetings going forward and, uh, we're very lucky to have their expertise. And I wanted to just rank it, recognize, recognize their efforts and, and helping, uh, try to do the best we can during these circumstances. So thank you for letting me do that, Mr. President.
Great, great point, Mr. Mayor. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I have to, I'm going to ask about the executive session schedule. Is there any flexibility to do either Tuesday or Thursday, Mr. Mayor?
Regarding?
The, Mr. Mayor asked about a, um, executive session next week.
Yeah, I think, um, oh, sorry.
Nope, nope. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I think the city solicitor needed to report on Thursday, so he was hoping to have it before then. So any day that would work for the council, um, you know, we could do it Tuesday evening. That'd be fine.
That'd be great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Point of interest?
Council Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just following up more in the vein of, uh, what Council Melville had suggested. Um, I just wanted to make, uh, make a point that as we do have some councillors coming back for the next meeting in person, that, uh, we work with, uh, Health Director Cameron on an attestation form, uh, that's universally used with most businesses and temperature screening and, uh, protocol or face masks so that those of us that are participating in person feel comfortable and confident that not only are they not at risk, but they're also, uh, at a lower risk of transmitting, uh, the virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Welton. Um, so I'll ask the city clerk to set up an executive session for next Thursday, if, next Tuesday. Is everybody amendable to next Tuesday?
Would you, what date is that, Tom? Sorry.
That is the 18th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Shiret.
Yeah, is, I'm not sure of the, um, timing, but is that a school committee meeting?
I believe so.
I'm sorry, was that, you think so?
I believe you're right.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, you may want to check your calendar.
Yes, I'll be able to work that out.
All right. So, uh, we'll have an executive session at six o'clock next Tuesday, the 18th.
Council President, that gives us enough time to post?
Yes. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, is it safe to assume that the executive session, executive session is via Zoom?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, sorry, Council President, do we have a meeting already, uh, in zoning? Was that Monday? That's, I'm sorry, that's Monday. Sorry.
That's Monday. Yep, that's okay. Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, regarding the executive session, can we get, um, subject matters laid out? Um, I know, um, one will be 40 and 42 Endicott Street. Um, are, are we discussing, what, there was a, something mentioned by Council Manning regarding some other pending litigation that, um, with the open meeting law violations, maybe?
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, when we get, uh, the meeting notice, it'll have agenda items on there. So I assume, um, the clerk will talk to, um, Councillor Khan and get, um, a list of the agenda items and that will be part of our packet tomorrow.
I, I get that, Mr. President, but yeah, I'm not looking for Attorney Khan to set the agenda. I'm, I'm wondering if we can have, um, discussion on 40 and 42 Endicott as well as pending litigation, uh, with open meeting law. Uh, it's, it's more of a question to you. Could we add those?
Oh, yes.
Mr. President.
I may have missed this. Is this Zoom or in-person executive meeting?
It'll be Zoom. We don't have the mechanisms. I, I, I think it's going to take at least next week to come up with the mechanism of how the Wiggins is going to look, act and feel as far as audio goes, as far as desks go, labeling, um, each individual, um, microphone. So I want to give a little bit of time. So our next regular meeting will be the 27th where we will start, um, the motion that just passed.
Council President, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure because so many things have been risen. I wouldn't allow to do a executive meeting through Zoom where the securities of and we're overhearing something that shouldn't have been.
So what will happen?
Not do it in person.
Nope. So what will happen is, is, uh, the Zoom format will be set up. You will get a link to open in regular session. We will open and close in, in regular session and then there'll be a separate link that you will be asked to go to, to attend executive session.
Council, you'll be getting two invitations. So the first, um, invitation will just be to open executive session and go into it.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the council? From the guests? Council Turco.
Mr. President, since we're not meeting till the 27th, I need to add, uh, or, or ask that we add two things to, um, ICD. Um, I, I obviously have to make that in the form of a motion. I'd like to add the discussion of the, um, Elfine property, um, which some, some work is being done on that. Have, um, Kurt Ballavance, Brendan from Community Development, um, and Attorney Khan present. Um, if we could schedule that for ICD, um, through Council Gould. And I know he has one scheduled, but it might be a lengthy conversation on this, uh, fine building. And secondarily for, um, ICD, I'd like to schedule, um, uh, some money that we borrowed for the capital budget last year, uh, that was supposed to go toward, um, Granite Road, um, flooded. Um, if you all remember, Mr. Dulp, uh, had presented. I'd like to ask Mr. Dulp to come back in for ICD so that, um, we could discuss and also, um, Mr. LaBosse. Yeah. I'll make that in the form of the motion to add those two topics to ICD. So moved.
You heard the motion by Council Turco on the motion to refer those two items to the industrial community development.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
On the motion, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Counsel, thank you, Counsel Turco. Through you, Mr. President, Allison. Allison, we have 6 o'clock meeting scheduled. Do we have enough time to handle all four items or are we gonna, gonna, are we better off having the last two that Counsel Turco mentioned for a meeting in September?
Well, your one discussion is the status of city-owned property.
Property, right. That'll probably be 45 minutes or so. Do you have anything else scheduled that evening?
No, that's the only item that I thought we were going to discuss that tonight.
Are you talking about any other subcommittee meetings?
Yes, I am, yes.
It wasn't going to be, was there going to be a legal? Okay. No, that was going to be the only one.
So can we shoot for an hour and a half prior to our regular meeting?
It started at 5:30?
No, start at 6. We, we go to 7:30.
Okay.
If that's okay, Counsel Turco.
Thank you very much, Counsel Gould. That, that works great for me and I'll be brief. I'll try to get through these subjects quickly so that we stay on track.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison.
Any further comments from council? Being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You heard the motion.
Counsel Rozignol, do we vote on including Counsel Turco's?
Good point.
The motion to the floor. Correct, Counsel Welton. Thank you.
Correct, correct. On the motion to send those two items to industrial community development, roll call vote.
Counsel Welton?
Yes.
Sackler?
Yes.
Missoula?
Yes.
Ghul?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Counsel Welton. Thank you, Counsel Gould. You heard the motion. Roll call vote.
Counsel Welton?
Yes.
Sackler?
Yes.
Missoula?
Yes.
Ghul?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you for a great meeting, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, Tom.
Nice speaking, everybody.